I'd like to call this regular Board of Ed meeting to order at 7 o'clock. A moment of silence, Ms. Pickett.
Yesterday was 22 years since the horror of 9/11. Although many of our students were not alive when this tragedy happened, it is important that we remember and honor. How we teach students to critically examine historical events matters. I ask that tonight, we remember the loss, the helpers, and our continued commitment to creating an inclusive world that is built on love and connection. I will end with the words of Dr. Maya Angelou and her response to the attacks of 9/11. I think we have to keep our hearts in peace. Now, that doesn't mean stop protecting ourselves. By all means, we must protect ourselves, but we must not become the terrorists we Now, we'll do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Reider?
Here.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Accree?
Here.
Dr. Callen?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Hamery?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Madam Chair?
Item 6, Board Guests, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have two very special guests, so we're going to start with one that's a little bit more special. And we're going to welcome Special Education Teacher Amy Santinella and Enfield High School Students Delaney Hutchins and Autumn Leduke. They're here to talk about the Best Buddies Program and being nominated as Connecticut's Best Buddy Champions of the Year. So, welcome, come on up.
I'm honored to be here tonight, standing, sitting next to two of my former students. I'm grateful for this opportunity to be here to share the vital work of our Best Buddies members. Many people ask me what Best Buddies is, and I simply say it's friendship. Bottom line, friendship. A more official definition, of course, is that Best Buddies is a national organization developed to end the social, physical, and economic isolation of people with special abilities. We often live our lives day in and day out, not fully realizing that people with disabilities struggle socially, they can feel isolated. Connection and friendship are one of the most beautiful parts of our lives. What feels like many years ago, I sat with a former teacher at the Enfield High School and listened to her speak about this organization called Best Buddies. I think it was Meg Murphy. She did it in college. It wasn't really a thing when I was in college, because I'm, you know, not as young as those freshly out of college kiddos. But she talked about the impact it could have on the students. And right around that same time, I had a student, Delaney Hutchins. She would come into my classroom and ask to visit her friends from elementary school. And I just thought that was so brave and kind and compassionate of her. When she would enter the room, automatic smiles, and Autumn would say, "What's up, Delaney?" in her sassy little tone. Delaney became a staple to our group. She would help us cook on Fridays. She would run morning meetings, you know, talk about the calendar and the weather when Autumn would let her. That was Autumn's job. And, you know, one of the bravest things about Delaney is she made sure that no one was ever sitting alone at lunch. It was huge. She inspired me, so I decided I needed to start Best Buddies. Fast forward through the pandemic and rebuilding school normalcy, here we are, holding strong. And we have a really, really brave set of kiddos here. We have a huge club at JFK. And I can't say enough about the Best Buddies Program, the staff that supports the goals of the program, and the students that make up the chapter. Overall, it's created friendships, compassion. At JFK alone, we see random acts of kindness. No one sits alone at lunch. And it's embedded within our culture, thanks to Best Buddies. So, I know at EHS, Delaney has been the president of the chapter and pretty much ran the chapter last year. We have some new leadership for the Enfield High School chapter, which is really important to keep spreading that work and that message of kindness. So, I'm here, basically, you know, to support my former students, but also to let you know that the power of friendship and caring is real. So, when I started Best Buddies in 2019, I had this vision of what I wanted it to be, and this is it right here. I'm teary-eyed. My vision was Autumn, happy, smiling, thriving, loving high school, with her friend, Delaney. So, you know, this work that they've done and friendship that they've kept going through all these years is just what Best Buddies is all about. I nominated Delaney and Autumn for Champion of the Year because they are just that, champions. They spread kindness, they talk about inclusion, they have a great friendship, and most importantly, the message of awareness for people of all abilities is spread. So, here before us tonight are our champions. They're seniors in high school. So exciting, lots to come forward this year. They're ready to take on the world. And so, I thank you both for all of your wonderful, hard work. You've touched my life. I know you've touched many others' lives, too. And I'm your biggest fan, both of you. I'll always be rooting for you, both. Enfield is rooting for you. We saw that at the can drive, many people coming out in the community and dropping off their cans. You know, some people even saying, you know, "These have been sitting in my garage, and your post just came up, and we wanted to give them to you." That's huge. JFK is supporting you, rooting for you. Enfield High School is rooting for you. Your families are rooting for you, your friends, your wonderful friends at Enfield High. I know they went up and made an announcement during an assembly, which is so brave and so awesome. And I know the Board of Education is rooting for you guys. So, I'm super proud of you both. You guys are our champions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Delaney Hutchings, and I'm a senior at Enfield High School. I want to start off by saying thank you to the Board of Ed and Superintendent Dreszek and the rest of the town for supporting Autumn and I in our run for Best Buddies Championy there. It truly means a lot to us. Best Buddies has made a huge impact on my life, but the biggest impact is from the friends I made along the way. I remember being outside for recess in 4th grade with my friend, and we saw a girl by herself with her para. They were throwing a ball back and forth, and while the girl had interaction with her para, she didn't have anyone her age playing with her at recess. We decided to go ask and join, and did so for the rest of the year. The following year, we not only got to see each other at recess, we were able to join in during library, sometimes art, and other classes as well. The environment and friends I've made over the two years made such an impact, I knew I wanted to continue joining in the AOP classroom and continue to make new friends. I talked with my guidance counselor, and I was able to go into the AOP classroom every morning. Here, I met the best teacher I could ever meet, Ms. Santinella. She brought me into the classroom and taught me so much. I was able to help teach lessons, do morning meetings, join in activities, and visit the classroom often. Because of Ms. Santinella, I knew I wanted to become a Special Education teacher. During my 6th grade year, I made many new friends, but most importantly, I met Autumn. She's never afraid to be herself, constantly singing, dancing, hair flipping, and always rocking her outfits. Autumn has taught me so much about being myself, no matter what. Our bond has just continued to grow over the years, and I don't know what I would do without her in my life. She can cheer up anyone and make them laugh, and I love that about her. I was beyond lucky to be so involved in the AOP program and included throughout the classroom, but there is more that needed to be done to spread inclusion. Ms. Santinella discussed her plans to start a Best Buddies chapter at JFK, and I was so excited to be part of the journey. I got friends to join the club, and the club really started to become what it was made for, creating friendships and inclusivity throughout the middle school. My 8th grade year was cut short because of COVID, and freshman year was still not normal. One thing that helped me through all the change and uncertainty was Best Buddies. We had Zoom meetings, and although it was different, I was still making new friends. I became chapter secretary during my freshman year. The following year, I became chapter's vice president. Going into my junior year, there was no advisor, so I became president. There were many challenges, and it was a small group of kids, but nonetheless, it was still everything Best Buddies stands for. We had get-togethers and met every Wednesday to socialize. So many friendships grew and were made. Now, going into my senior year, I am president once again, and this year with Mr. Ramos as our advisor, I'm beyond excited for the Best Buddies Program to grow even more. We have lots of fun things planned between meetings, field trips, and fun activities, and I know it will be a great year. Being nominated as Best Buddies Champion helps motivate me even more. This club, the people, and the support system I have today have made a huge impact on my life, and I am beyond grateful to be able to spread and bring more awareness to Best Buddies. Autumn has been the best candidate partner. We are the youngest pair against nine other pairs in Connecticut. This competition brings awareness to all the important work Best Buddies does. Best Buddies is a nonprofit organization that relies on money raised through our fundraisers to continue its mission. The mission is dedicated to establishing a global volunteer movement that creates opportunities for one-to-one friendships, integrated employment, leadership development, and inclusive living for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our next fundraiser is this Saturday. We have a car wash at the Raffia Road Center, and on September 23rd, we have a fundraiser at Stand Out Nutrition from 8 to 3:00. I'm going to give the mic to Autumn to tell you all more. Once again, I would like to thank everyone who has been supporting us along the way. Thank you to the Board of Ed and Superintendent Dreszek for letting us come out and talk.
Are you ready? That way, they can hear you. Scutcheon. There you go. Ready?
Hi, my name is Harmon Desberger Duke. I like Best Buddies, I like fun things. Best Buddies is about leadership, about shop, and I have a house. Me and Delaney are making money for it.
You're good. Right now, I'm done.
And acted.
Bottles.
Bottles and I handle add bottles. Thank for your help.
Good job. Don't get up just yet. We'll have board members that want to make some comments or ask some questions about the program. Is there anybody that would like to start? Mr. Reider?
So, first of all, I think this is amazing, and I'll let everybody, you know, speak with you. But I just wanted to ask you, from a strategical standpoint, what is the fundraising for? We would love to help promote it, you know, through our schools and through Enfield PTO and, you know, all of our social medias, whatever we can do to help. But I was just wondering, like, what are the next steps for you guys? I know you were nominated to be champions, like, does then it go to, like, a state committee? Like, just kind of walk us through this honor.
So, the fundraising currently, any of the money we make, it'll go towards, like, our team. And at the Best Buddies Gala, they'll announce who the winner is. It's basically whoever fundraised the most money for the club. And then, it goes for, like, anything. We have leadership training days, so to get things for that, to help for each of the chapters, there is, like, a fee that goes in. But fundraising, like, the more money we make, the less it's going to have to be to become a new chapter, so all those things.
And it's a nonprofit organization, so whatever money we do raise goes right back to the mission and the work that the Best Buddies Connecticut, Best Buddies United States, it's global. This money will go back into their mission of making sure that chapters are started in schools. I know that they're working now to try and get this going in elementary schools so that, you know, we can get kids involved even younger. There's a Best Buddies Walk that also raises money. This organization is not just in schools, there's now inclusive living. So, there are chapters that are started where, you know, adults will go in and live in a home sponsored by Best Buddies, where they will live in partnerships together. There's integrated employment opportunities. You know, there are huge organizations that take on all types of people to work in their establishments. One of the biggest ones in Connecticut is Black &amp; Decker. They will, you know, make sure that they are supporting this mission with Best Buddies to get everybody a job and working, any abilities. So, it's huge work that they do. I know a lot of people look at it as, "Oh, you're fundraising again," but this money really does go back to this nonprofit organization to work with this, you know, goal of making sure that everybody is included in society, in education, in living overall. So, it's really important work, and I know it's been a lot of work, but you girls have just, you know, blown this out of the water with your planning and your organization of, you know, even coming up with raffle baskets. We had Mayor Crisati out at the Red Robin night, huge turnout for that. You know, so it's just, it really goes to show, you know, that the community and people really care about this work that we're doing, so it's, I'm really thankful.
Is...
It's, you know, students like this and families that back them that just make this so rewarding for me as a teacher and...
So, my only follow-up is, is there a specific link, like, to your page?
Yes.
That we could share, that if you could email me, Ms. Santinella?
Yes.
That I could blast out, just in case somebody missed the bottle fundraiser or wasn't at Red Robin?
Yep.
Or won't be able to go get their car washed on the 23rd, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Car wash is this weekend.
Car wash is this weekend, and the 23rd is...
Stand Out Nutrition.
Stand Out Nutrition, right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you could just get all of us that link, but if I had that link, we could blast that out, too.
And, you know, any amount is just even $5. We were saying, you know, it's just a little, whatever spare change we'll take. We have donation bins at any of the, you know, fundraisers that we've done. And we've had kids, so sweet, come up and just want to put $1 in, and we'll take it, because it's going to a great cause. So, thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickett?
All right, I don't even want to know what I look like on camera, because there are no tissues up here tonight.
I couldn't even look at you.
So, I want to second your words, Ms. Santinella. We are rooting for you. I believe with my heart your winner's already, so thank you for what you've done, thank you what I hope will continue to be done and even grown, and awesome job. I love to hear, thank you for kind of answering that question and sharing more about Best Buddies, because I think that there's an opportunity for maybe some of our community partnership, and thinking about how we could grow this and the elementary component. So, my hope is, we can sustain and grow this effort, because I think it's really important. I want to thank both of you girls. I heard from how you all talked about each other, the importance of leadership skills, the importance of connection, the importance of finding strengths in each other, and highlighting those. You taught me some new language. I love the language of special abilities. I'm going to include that from now on, and how I talk about how we are all unique and special. So, my question is, how much more money do you need? Like, is there a goal you're trying to get to, and what is the gap?
So, right now, so right now, our current goal is $5,000. We did have the Red Robins fundraiser, and we haven't got the funds from that, but currently, we're a little over $2,000.
Okay.
So, we're looking for, hopefully, the rest to get to $5,000.
All right. Okay, well, everybody, that means let's get out that spare change, and let's go get our cars washed, and let's go get some, my guess is, like, shakes and stuff at Stand Out Nutrition.
Yeah.
And that information will be posted. Thank you so much. It also takes, I want to thank Mr. Ramos and you, Ms. Santinella, staff, because it also takes your time and dedication to do this work. So, thank you as well for stepping up and doing that, and leadership for supporting this effort, this work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hamery?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, a couple of things. Amanda and Scott took care of the questions I'd originally written down, and promoting that fundraising, again, that's on this Saturday and on the 23rd. Questions I have. You mentioned that JFK's got the program, Enfield High's got the program. Do you know how many different, how many pairs are in each school at this point?
So, we have, we'll have a parent, like, a match event is what it's called, a match party. And each student with a special ability will be matched with a regular student, and if there's more, like, I know the JFK program is huge, so there was a ton of kids last year, it was amazing. So, sometimes, there's four people in a friend group, all that, so...
Okay. Does the JFK groups, like, lead into Enfield High?
Yeah, I mean, so, middle school function's a little bit different than high school, just because of the age of the kids. So, in middle school, I will make sure that I am at every event, I am at every meeting. My, you know, my backbone is needed for everything that's done at the middle school. When the kids get up to the high school, it's more student-driven. So, you've heard Delaney say that she was secretary, then moved to vice president, and then president. When you're in high school, the chapter advisor is more of a person to guide them in the right direction, to make sure that things are flowing. So, really, at the high school, it's very student-driven. And, you know, the biggest thing about Best Buddies is we never force any of this on anyone. So, this has to come intrinsically from inside of you. So, when I have a kiddo that runs up to me and they're like, "I want to be part of Best Buddies," I say, "Next meeting, here it is, date and time." From there, it's who really, really wants this. And, you know, at JFK, we do have a huge chapter, so we don't have exactly one-to-one matches, we do more of, like, group activities. Where at the high school level, you know, kids start to drive, kids go to, you know, ice skating on Saturdays, they go to the movies, they'll go out and grab ice cream, and they can, you know, go and do those things independently. So, the friendships sort of meld on their own. And for the kiddos that are struggling, that's where we kind of match them and say, "Let's give this a try, and if it's great, great, if it's not, we'll, you know, switch things around." It's very flexible, and there's a lot of different ways you can make it happen. But when it melds and it works, have this, and it's beautiful. So, yeah, it's a little bit different. I would imagine elementary school is a bit more involved with, you know, maybe two or three staff members needing to, you know, corral the kiddos and make sure that the work is being done appropriately and properly. But, yeah, I'm really super thankful for Mr. Ramos for jumping on and, you know, being the advisor at the high school and, you know, making sure that this continues, because, you know, and I talked a lot to Delaney about how, when you graduate, we have to make sure that someone as amazing as you can fill those shoes. So, we've talked about, like, sort of like, training and talking about, you know, some of the sophomores and juniors who are super involved in getting them on board for more leadership. So, it's a little bit different at each level, but, yeah, we do have a lot of matches and...
That's amazing. So, thank you, and I just wanted, just one observation, that this is an example of, like, what the best of our schools are capable of. So, that is just very humbling to see this happening. So, I appreciate that opportunity to hear about the program, and to Mr. Ramos, Ms. Santinella, Delaney, and Autumn, thank you very much for coming here tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Accree?
Hi, thank you, Ms. Santinella, for starting such a great club. I mean, wow. And congratulations to Delaney and Autumn for being nominated as Connecticut's Best Buddies Champion. I just want to say that it was wonderful to hear, it's really touching, how Delaney, you have such, like, a kind and compassionate heart, because that was really the catalyst, that your teacher started the club. And also, I was really impressed by looking at the friendship that Delaney and Autumn share. It's, like, beautiful, you know, it's great. We need more young people getting along like this, I think it's great. And I was impressed that because you have such a beautiful friendship, you're able to accomplish so much together. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Ungeyer?
So, I'd like to say to Delaney and Autumn, thank you for coming and speaking to us here this evening, thank you very much. And to Ms. Santinella, I want to say thank you for starting this organization. I heard words like friendship, compassion, kindness, and caring, and these are the highest of human qualities. But these qualities are rooted in love, and that's what sponsors them. And I know that that's what's in your heart, and that's what inspired you to do this. So, thank you again for that. I'm the guy with lots of cans in his garage. So, I'm willing to help with that if I can, just let me know when, where, and how, and I'll be looking for any other ways and means to help your program there financially.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, we're not done yet. Dr. Callen, and then me, and then we'll let you go.
I promise I'll be very fast. Now, I was just thinking, as you folks were talking about, what an incredible journey we've made over the decades. We were proud of ourselves for the legislation that we passed, and, but I think, in the final analysis, what's really going to make the difference in terms of true integration, when all else is said and done, is friendship. Friendship and the mutual respect that derives from that. And I think it's as simple as that. So, this is an incredible idea, and surprisingly, such a simple solution, but it was still very profound, and I want to congratulate you on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Cushman, I didn't mean to exclude you. Would, is there anything you'd like to add or have any questions?
Sure. Yes, thank you. I do appreciate you coming, Delaney and Autumn, Ms. Santinella. I just found it so interesting to learn more about Best Buddies, even to see how it's extending after secondary school. You know, the employment and the housing opportunities is really, it's really interesting and exciting to see that it goes that far. Is there any possibility of having, or has there been any talk about having Best Buddies in our elementary schools yet?
I think we've mentioned it a few times. I haven't, you know, reached out to any admin or, you know, our leadership at the central office, but I think, I mean, I...
It'd be great to start it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you were already kind of doing it in 4th grade without having the label, so, I mean, I believe there's opportunities that this would take off tremendously at the elementary school. I know, you know, they have a lot of opportunities that happen naturally throughout the school day. They have those reading buddies and, you know, library helpers, and I think that it would be phenomenal, and I would love any students that they send to me from the elementary schools up to JFK.
Are there intentional ways that you are mentoring, like, say, for example, Delaney, as you're getting ready to move on as a senior? Are there any intentional ways that you are mentoring some of the younger students in the high school?
So, last year, again, the club was kind of small. Without an advisor, it's hard to get word around, but I definitely... get word around. But, I definitely have my younger brother and then my best friend's younger sister. We have them in the club. And so, they're both going into their sophomore year. So, they'll probably take over for a bit unless we have other students who come in and are super enthusiastic and want to do it. It is a lot of work, especially to help run it. But, I think anybody who wants to definitely can. Like, it'd be a great opportunity. And there can be more than one chapter president. There's clubs where there's like four or five chapter presidents, so.
Well, thank you. Really is beautiful to see that what you're doing isn't just lasting. Making an impact for a school year, really is making an impact for a lifetime. Thank you all for your commitment.
Thank you.
Okay, you can end with me. Interestingly enough, you guys are doing great work. And you know you're doing great work. I think for the adults in the room that were brought to tears. And there was more than just Ms. Pickett and me and Ms. Antonella. You just can't see the people behind you. This is so impactful. Because you're our future. And I can't even put into words how impactful this is and how touching. The world is a difficult place right now. And Ms. Pickett spoke of September 11th. And oftentimes, we talk about, can we go back to September 12th, when the United States was filled with love and friendship and helping each other? One of the best things about best buddies, and I know you have to do a little bit more management, Ms. Antonella and JFK, is that it's led by kids. The perfect example of seeing a student with a para. It's that student-to-student comfort and conversations because you're on their level together. You're both in fourth grade. You're both in, you know, seniors, juniors. And they feel like they have that rapport. That's a little bit easier to develop than, rather, with a student. I just wanted to ask another thing. What I, what I was impressed with about the, the way the nonprofit runs is that there's actually like leadership trainings and there's different trainings for you to go to. So, there's, there's guidance to say, you know, take this training. So, you're not kind of just spinning your wheels and, and running with it. So, I really like that. We wish you a lot of luck in this endeavor. And like Mr. Ryder said, send us the link for anything you have going on. Going forward, Ms. Antonella, I can say the board would love to get updates about, about best buddy. I'd love to hear about, you know, the numbers. And I hope you'll come back to us, Delaney, when you're ready to start teaching because it'd be pretty amazing to have you back here. And it's students like both you and Autumn that really make the world a better place. And you won't understand this, but we all have kids to say that we're going to teach our kids so much. But, we all know, at the end of the day, it's the kids that teach us the most about ourselves. So, thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you guys all need a minute before everybody leaves? Delaney, Autumn, you were smart enough to leak this out. But, Delaney, you're on the clock now. This meeting is taped. And although you're graduating the class of 24, college will be the class of 28, you'll also be a freshman again when you come back as the teaching class of 2028, back in the Enfield Public School. So, you're locked in. But, congratulations, guys. You just, you just aced your interview, Delaney. You're fine.
We'll see you in four years.
But, we have another very special guest tonight. And yes, we did plan it, but this, our next guest would have been here anyway, as you probably figured out. You've seen, this person is no stranger to these chambers. He's been in this, in the, as a board guest several times, particularly last year, informing the board about our Unified Sports Program, which a lot of you participated in or came to observe. We also got an opportunity to recognize him as Connecticut's Unified Coach of the Year. And it's no coincidence that our next guest was also named as this year's Enfield Teacher of the Year by his colleagues. So, it's with great pleasure that I'd introduce a familiar face, but one that is, usually when I get the call, it's like, oh, okay. I didn't, because I don't, I have nothing to do with it. But, I'll be honest, when I saw that call, and our former Teacher of the Year got the same thing because she was there as well. I was not surprised when I got the call. So, I want to welcome officially Enfield's Teacher of the Year, Armando Ramos.
Oh, man, that was a tough act to follow. That's tough. A lot of pressure, pressure. So, yeah. So, yes, I, I think a main reason why last year was so successful was definitely because of Unified. And I wanted to kind of share, give you a little glimpse into some of the things that we do here. I wanted to do a little activity with, with the board and, and Mr. Dreszek. So, I'll tell you a little bit of the backstory. So, a lot of the things that we do is around inclusion. And we want the kids to build connections and, you know, getting to know each other in names. So, we do, we did this activity kind of at the beginning to learn names. But, I'm assuming you guys know each other very well. So, it's a little, little different. In a classroom, you know, you would be introducing each other. But, I'm assuming you guys know each other fairly well. So, we'll skip that part. So, little backstory. So, we came, I came up with this idea last year after hosting a student teacher from Springfield College. So, wonderful young man, Gannon Olson. And Gannon is blind. So, he learned differently from, from, from our sighted students. So, the way he learned names was totally different. So, we came up with this activity to kind of get a little glimpse into his world. So, for this activity, it's called Heads Up. We're going to give it a try. And this is, the kids love this. So, you guys get an idea. So, I'm going to need, I was hoping Mr. Dreszek would volunteer for this one.
Somehow I realize, I don't have a choice, do I, Armando?
Uh, nope. You don't have a choice.
For the record, when we surprised him with this, we got him to get a little teary-eyed in front of his kids. So, this is payback.
This is payback.
What do I need to do?
All right. So, you're just going to put your head down and no peeking whatsoever.
Okay. This is the best meeting I've had in years.
All right. So, I'm going to kind of just like point to you. And you're just going to say, "Hello, Mr. Dreszek." And then, just by hearing the name, you're going to guess who that person is. Got it?
I think so.
All right.
Hello, Mr. Dreszek.
Tina.
Not bad.
Hello, Mr. Dreszek.
Little guy next to me. Longy?
Two for two.
Hello, Mr. Dreszek.
Ms. Akri.
All right. This is, she's too good at this. So, we're, all right. So, we're going to level up. So, we do this, if the kids know each other pretty well, we do level up. So, you got to change your voice up a little bit. You got to talk very deeply. Or, you could talk high. It's up to you. All right, ready?
Don't can't peek.
Head down. It's two for two.
Hello, Mr. Dreszek.
It's got to be Mr. Ryder. No? Mr. Hamery?
Yep.
Hello, Mr. Dreszek.
Hi, Amanda.
He's doing, he's doing good. He's doing good.
Hello, Mr. Dreszek.
What's up, doc?
Your cowboys are off to a lucky start.
Whatever, Ryder. Hello, Mr. Ungeyer.
All right, nice job. Let's give him a hand for.
Thanks, guys.
All right. So, that, that's just a little fun thing that we do. And it's, it's really just about inclusion and getting the kids connected to each other. I think that's an important part of it. And like I said, last year was really like an amazing year. I, I'm still like, you know, in shock over how great it was. It was just really like a banner year for me. So, I wanted just to share some, some, some quick shots of, of me and the kids. All right. So, let me see here. All right. So, that's us. This is us in our, with our best buddies. I think that, is that, oh, no, no. So, that's just, we were just giving positive messages to the kids in front of the gym. This is a shot of us and our team on Capitol Hill Day. All right, that is Lily and Shaylen over here. That's Lily and that's Shaylen. And that, this is us and some of the meetings. All right, this is us with our Congressman Joe Courtney over here. We got to host a cornhole tournament, first ever. We had like seven teams. That was a lot of fun here at Enfield. We had ice cream after. It was a lot of fun. I got this crazy award. This is something that I'm super proud of too. Is, we, we used to do this a ton during, like pre-pandemic. But, it was shut down and it came back last year. They asked us to go to leadership conferences. And our kids run seminars on inclusion and communication. And we were able to bring three groups on, these are all the kids that went, three groups to his nuntuck. And I think the, they were fifth graders from all over Connecticut. And it was just, it was just a great little project. And the kids got a, you know, just got, just got a great experience to, to teach and advocate. And, and, you know, so a lot of these kids want to end up, you know, being teachers, coaches, guidance counselors, social workers. So, it was a great way for them to kind of get their feet wet. All right. And that's just some of us in our leadership conferences from prior visits. All right, this is some of our best buddies. We went bowling. And it's Teacher Appreciation Week. We wrote some messages for teachers. One of the things that we did last year that I was super proud of is we had our First Responders Volleyball Tournament. We had six teams. We had the Enfield Police and Fire Department and the Allied Stars. We had our Special Kit, Special Olympic Track and Field Night. And this year, we had to do it inside because of those, the air quality was so poor because of the fires. So, that was kind of interesting. And we made the patch here. The, the winning team, we had a couple of Unified players with the police department. That's them on the left. And we had the team picture with the fire truck. All right. And this is our indoor track meet with the local Allied Stars and the JFK Unified Team. There's a javelin, our shotputters. All right. These are just some other things that we were able to do that were, that were really noteworthy. Oh, this was kind of cute. The kids just wanted to do an inclusion rocks project. So, we, we made maybe about three to 400 inclusion rocks with real positive messages. And we went down to the, the local, I think it was Enfield Street, Street Elementary School. And we did like a little, a little like rocks, like, like scavenger hunt where the kids went around, kind of like an Easter egg kind of hunt type of thing. And they were able to read the messages to each other. And it's a lot of fun. That's our inclusion pledge. We, you pledge to use inclusive language. And I think we're going to skip that. All right. So, that just gives you an, an idea. We had a great year. So, I, I put together some words that I just wanted to kind of share with you. All right. So, during last season's NBA playoffs, there was a commercial that I, that I loved featuring NBA Hall of Famer Charles Barkley. Charles finds himself sitting next to a 20-something-year-old version of himself. The young Barkley asks his elder, "How many championships are you going to win?" "No, no, no. Wait. Don't surprise, don't, don't tell me. I want to be surprised." The older, wiser Barkley responds, "Oh, you're going to be surprised." I can relate to this commercial so well because in my 20-something-year-old me would never have expected to be where I am today and, and sitting with you, talking to you tonight. It's still surreal that I'm speaking to you as Enfield's Teacher of the Year. And I'm trying to convey a message after 24 years on the job. So, if I was giving my 20-something-year-old me some advice, what would it be? I would say that this job is all about the relationships. You know, what I'm really most proud of are the relationships I've built with my students. I'm definitely lucky to have the most inspiring kids. And if you're ever having a bad day, it won't be long before I'm laughing off my troubles with my kids. Cultivating these relationships does take time, but it's so worth it. A few years back, my Unified kids came up with a mission statement that has become our philosophy as a program. It goes as follows. Our mission: to make Enfield High School a kinder, more accepting place where all students feel included and are successful. I still remember my favorite teachers from high school, not for what they taught me, but rather how connected they made me feel. In my humble opinion, creating a classroom environment where kids feel connected to you, their classmates, and their school is the most rewarding part of this job. This past February, Special Olympics Connecticut asked if I would join them at the Special Olympics Capitol Hill Day in Washington, D.C. by bringing a team to advocate for Special Olympics and Unified Sports. My role as coach was to train a partner and an athlete to conduct meetings in Congress by telling their stories of how Special Olympics has positively impacted their lives and why Congress should support Special Olympics. I was also tasked to share my own experiences as coach about the impacts I have witnessed. So, I'd like to share a small portion of that speech to illustrate how inspiring the kids are at Enfield High School. So, here's the speech. I'll lose a little part of it. At the end of each semester, I asked my team to write an essay for the annual state essay contest. We actually had a winner, Josh Pentey, during the pandemic. He graduated last year. This year, my kids wrote many inspirational essays. So, I decided to take a few lines from some of those essays. So, you can hear for yourself how Unified has impacted them. The essay prompt was as follows. How has Unified Sports impacted you, your teammates, and your school community? First one is from Nate Ramos. And this is him before Unified Sports. In middle school, I was surrounded by friends who were hateful, rude, and discriminatory towards others. The people who were especially picked on were the people with special needs in my school. I didn't necessarily go out of my way to pick on them, but I laughed alongside the jokes that my friends made, not realizing the hurt or pain I'd put them through. And this is Nate after Unified Sports. This hateful mentality within me felt a little embarrassed for laughing at others when they missed the ball or not helping someone when they were clearly struggling. Now, I feel true compassion in my heart as I watch my friends help someone who was struggling to serve the ball. Now, I realize that my athlete friends are just as valuable to the game. Next one is from Conlon Shaw. This is one of my athletes who I brought on the, the Leadership Conference. All right. Being in Unified made me feel empowered because I got to go on a field trip to teach children at the Leadership Conference. This showed me that I am responsible. I loved the Leadership Field Trip. And my last one is from Ally Tetrel. Having a Unified Sports team in our school has really made an impact on not only our school community, but our town community. I think having a unified option in school is vital to creating an accepting environment. And I think this is going to impact society in an incredible way. Being hateful, judgmental, or closed-minded isn't something that we are born with. It's something that is learned. When students are shown how to be accepting and accommodating of others at a young age, it stays with them throughout life. The mindset is then not only applied in class, but in everyday life. Once you see how to be kind and helpful and learn how to effectively communicate in the classroom, you'll use these skills in every day, whether you realize it or not. It changes the way you think and how you interact with those around you. Eventually, this one, this line gets me, she says. Eventually, the students at Enfield will grow older and possibly have their own children. We will teach acceptance and positivity to our own children. So, in closing, I would like to, to thank my friends in the P Department. I feel like this honor is a team effort for sure. Couldn't have done it without them. I would also like to thank my incredible students who make me look good every day and make my job awesome. These relationships are priceless to me and are the reason that I am with you here today. I definitely never envisioned myself standing here giving this speech, but I am thankful for this honor. I think my Springfield College classmate and rugby teammate, Andy Longy, said it best. Not bad for a couple of knuckleheads from Springfield College. Thank you.
Would you like to share anything else, Mr. Ramos?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to save those for another day.
So, Mr. Ramos, we actually have a special guest here for you that would like to say a few words on behalf of the parents' expect, perception of what they went through with Unified Sports.
Okay.
Come on up. Just make sure the red light's on and you can pull the mic over. And you can say, state your name, but you don't have to give your address.
Hi, I am Sarah Leventhal. And I am a parent of Shay, who is a student at Enfield High School and a student of Mr. Ramos's. So, as Enfield's Teacher of the Year, he also becomes part of the pool for State Teacher of the Year. of the Year, and I wanted to share with you the letter that I wrote in support of his As a parent of one of Mr. Armando Ramos's students, I could not have been more elated than when I received the news that he was chosen as the 2023-2024 Enfield Teacher of the Year. It is a supreme pleasure to write this letter of recommendation for him for his Connecticut Teacher of the Year application. My daughter Shay, who is intellectually disabled, has been in his Unified Sports Class and Extracurricular Program for three school years and recently joined the Best Buddy Club he oversees. Quite expectedly, she has already signed up for her, a fourth, as her schedule wouldn't be fully complete without being a part of his amazing teaching, personal mentorship, care, and coaching. Over these years, I have also been able to attend many of the Unified Sport events which Armando has meticulously organized and directed, and I was further able to travel with him as a parent chaperone as part of the Special Olympics Unified Sports Connecticut Delegation at Capitol Hill Day in Washington, DC this past February. I believe these experiences have given me great knowledge to recommend him so highly. It is easy to share that Armando has created an environment where student enjoyment is in abundance and where respect for his leadership is obvious. The rapid growth in student participation and the vast diversity of students involved surely exemplifies this. And not just in his classes, but the amount and variety of events and opportunities for students to participate is astounding. Some examples of this include organizing and hosting cornhole and volleyball tournaments, track and field nights, and the R Word campaigns, and even participation in leadership conferences. You would think that that would be enough to show his fervent dedication, but it goes far beyond this. Armando has rallied community organizations to participate as well. Events include the Middle School Unified Sports Program, the local Special Olympics Allied Sports Program, and even the police and fire organizations. I also personally watched him pull graduated Unified Sport athletes from the stands while encouraging their continued inclusion and participation. Armando is undoubtedly a tireless advocate for inclusivity. The extraordinary time and effort he puts into making sure these events are spectacular and the overwhelming desire for others to be involved is remarkable. Armando's style of teaching and coaching is filled with dynamic energy, intensity, and enthusiasm that is contagious. You are surrounded by smiles, hearty laughs, high fives, words of encouragement, and shared accolades. His focus on fun, supportive play, fostering sportsmanship, and building friendships and personal connections is truly far-reaching. One word: memorable. On a more personal note, my daughter Shay has absolutely and positively been changed by Armando's tutelage and mentorship. When asked, she described him as amazingly caring, kind, and heartfelt. She is most appreciative of his help in fostering successful peer interactions and relationships so that she can have friends she otherwise would not. Shay is often challenged by understanding social cues and even responding appropriately in challenging situations. Armando does not get lost in the enormity of class sizes or events. He remains fully aware and never minimizes the particular supports and special needs of his students, and certainly Shay. My daughter is also emotional, regularly seeks attention, information, and asks lots of questions. Armando is aware of her needs, sensitive in his approach, and quick to give help and offer answers with much-needed, genuine sincerity, worthiness, and incredible dignity. Taking the time to know her well, he has also capitalized on her confidence to lead and speak before others. Shay is so proud to be able to stand up at each and every home event and lead the athletes and crowd in the opening ceremony Special Olympic oath. Seemingly a small task that in reality is a huge boost to my daughter's self-worth. Armando has gone above and beyond in regards to social mentoring and friendship building through sports, sports training, and competitive experiences in class, on the court, and the field. He gets it. If ever there was a choice that showcases Armando's dedication and passion for teaching and coaching and the success of the Unified Sports classes at Enfield High School, it certainly could be the selection to represent the Connecticut delegation for Special Olympics at Capitol Hill Day in Washington, DC. Leaders like Armando and their programs are picked because they do an outstanding job at improving the quality of life of its participants, not just through inclusivity, but its student, athletes, and partners truly understanding the impact of togetherness. Their mission was to speak before Senate and congressional offices in support of Olympics and Unified Sport programs to ensure continued federal support. Armando chose Shay to be the Unified Sport athlete to attend and carry out a part of this task. Wow. You can imagine the excitement and bang this created. Life-changing. I was awed by Armando's ability to lead this endeavor from start to finish. In an effort to make Shay feel good, he created celebrity status in how he announced the news and shared it with her. In getting down to business, Armando spent many school days working with both Shay and the student-partner athlete on their speeches, oration skills, understanding professional etiquette, and personal presentation. Armando's zeal coupled with encouragement and reassurance made it impossible for the two students to feel nothing other than poise and self-confidence. They were totally prepared and ready to fully realize their own potential and success. They have Armando, his teaching, to thank for this. As a team, they knocked it out of the park. In closing, I would like to share with you what I think is Armando's greatest achievement. Through all of his intense devotion, eagerness, and passion for teaching, he has not only changed the culture and climate at Enfield High School, but he has influenced our community at large as well. Every day, he works towards reducing physical isolation and bringing students together. Think about that for a second. Armando Ramos, one person, a phenomenal teacher, inspiring such positivity and change. I will forever be thankful for everything he has done for my daughter Shay. He has made a profound impact that is unequivocally and distinctly worthy of your consideration of the next Teacher of the Year.
Thank you for sharing. I think that was really important to hear a parent's perspective. Sorry, Mr. Ramos. This is quite a night here in the council chambers, and there's no tissues. We just have a few words for you, Mr. Ramos. Mr. Hamery?
So, as Tina was saying, this is one heck of a way to start the meeting, and again, very humbling to have your colleagues recognize you the way that they did, and the support from the families that you're impacting is nothing less than profoundly humbling. And for us to be able to sit up here and be witness to it, it's just amazing. So, nothing more from me. Thank you for all that you've done.
Ms. Pickett?
Mr. Ramos, thank you. I'm not surprised because we've heard about all of this amazing work, and that deserves to be recognized. So, thank you. And a couple of things that I think are really important to highlight that I heard from your words, the quotes that you chose from the student essays, and from you as a mom, I can just share, like, I just connected with you as a mom as you spoke, so not enough tissues, quick enough. But that you really spoke about belonging. I love the words of impact of togetherness, and I think that has been the theme thus far, and I hope to see it grow. I love to hear that you're already partnering with our Police Department and Fire Department and Allied, and I hope to see that grow as well. And I remember those rocks at Enfield Street School because that is my children's school, and we saw those rocks. And now I'm like, oh, that's where they were from. So, thank you so much. Congratulations. And just like the other two, regardless if you win the Connecticut Award or not, I think you're already a winner.
Thank you.
Ms. Akri?
Congratulations, Mr. Ramos, for being Enfield's Teacher of the Year. As you know, I'm a former teacher, retired teacher, and I feel that teaching is an honorable profession. And by you winning this award, it shows how you're such an excellent teacher. All that hard work, all that I heard tonight, it was like, amazing. So you, I feel, you exhibit the hard work, dedication, professionalism, and now the respect from your colleagues. And by having all this, it's very rewarding, right?
Yeah.
Overwhelming, rewarding.
Thank you. Yeah, it's definitely overwhelming, but thank you. I agree. Yes, yes.
But thank you so much for being a great teacher. Thank you.
Mr. Ungary?
Just, just quick. Thank you for all you do for the Enfield Public Schools and our community here in Enfield. Congratulations on Teacher of the Year. Keep up the good work. Keep up the great work. And, quick question, if you don't mind, and please, if you don't want to answer, don't. How long have you been teaching in the Enfield Public Schools?
I started in 2000.
Okay.
So, a couple of years.
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
Well, great. So, congratulations again. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Ramos, thank you so much. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations. We are very lucky to have you. I can tell that this kind of thing makes you a little uncomfortable because you kind of just go out there and do what you want to do and lead with your heart and make Enfield High and this place a better place to live and be a student. I can tell that you kind of are like, oh, all these accolades, but every once in a while, you have to accept it, and you deserve it. So, thank you very much. And on behalf of the board, we're all gonna get up. We have a gift for you. So, thank you.
to thank Sarah. That was, that was incredible. That letter, when you sent that, I like, I was crying, I'll be honest with you. That was the sweetest letter that I have ever heard. I can't even express how amazing that was and how much it meant to me. So, thank you. I also wanted to thank somebody that is here with us today. That's Marilyn. If it wasn't for Brian and Marilyn, I wouldn't be here today. She recruited me back, I don't even, I don't even want to do the math, but she recruited me back in the Fermi days to do this, and it was the best, best decision that I ever made. So, I want to thank her too. Thank you all.
Okay, with all that, the meeting is now ended. We don't need to discuss anything Thank you again. Okay, I guess we have to move on and finish the meeting. Item seven, Superintendent's Report?
Yeah, I gotta follow that. So, you're gonna vote on student representatives this evening, and Mr. Longy and I get the privilege of walking our two new ones, our two existing ones into new ones tomorrow, but you'll have that in your packet later on. So, this is the last meeting that you don't get a report from them, which, thank goodness. And after what we just experienced tonight, it's kind of hard to say that, this is our first meeting since the first day of school. Last time we met was prior to first day of school, and we're off to a great start. And walking through Enfield High School and seeing Mr. Ramos and his kids, it's kind of hard to say you didn't have a good day. But even though we've been for nine days now, we've been back, it was a little warmer than we originally anticipated, and I understand that some of our kids got a couple of unplanned half-days. And I appreciate everybody that went as part of that, and it was a late-minute decision that we were forced to make. And we usually thank staff, and we always thank our kids, but I really want to take an opportunity just quickly to thank our parents. As a parent myself, I understand that sometimes early release days are very challenging, particularly for working families, because that means somebody's got to get out and go pick your kids up because a guy like me is telling them they got to go home. We don't do that to make your life harder or more challenging, but we do it ultimately for what's in the best interest in the health and safety of our kids. And quite frankly, those two days are just too warm in some of our elementary schools. We did, I understand that our middle school and high school are air-conditioned, but unfortunately, in days like that, we have to let everybody out because if we just let elementary kids out, we don't have the ability to bus everyone at the same time. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank families. Judging by the amount of calls that I received during those decisions, which was nothing, means that parents really understood that this was in the best interest of kids, but they often don't get the credit they deserve. So, thank you to that. And lastly, I just want to touch upon something briefly because it's come to my attention. I wasn't planning on bringing it up this evening, but I've gotten a few inquiries over the last, basically, last 24 hours with regards to actually one of your policies that gets sent out in the student handbook. And just to be clear, and I won't go into long details about it, because I think the people who have reached out to me, I've communicated with them, and they've been very cordial and appreciative of the information. Some of it could be a bit confusing, but it's essentially regarding Policy 6162-51, and that survey of students, and it's centered around student privacy. I think there's some misinformation maybe being floated around there, understandably. Sometimes when you read a policy like this, you might think, this doesn't make sense. Someone who does this for a living, both of us read this at first glance and realized, yeah, I'd be confused too if I didn't do this for a living. But in a nutshell, it's a policy that the Board of Education, so you guys are off the hook, it's your policy, but you were required to adopt one by federal law. And the federal law is the Protection of People Rights Amendment, otherwise known as PPRA, and it comes directly from the United States Department of Education Student Privacy Policy Office. That's an actual place. Believe it or not, this law, this People Rights Amendment Act was created in 1978, and like every law that we deal with throughout this legislative process, sometimes they get updated. The most recent one was updated, actually, November 24th in 2020. And sometimes it takes time for federal laws to make its way to the local level till we understand what it means. But the Board of Education, some of you were on it, some of you weren't, actually made the amendment and created this policy back in 2021. And it was done so based on the advice of legal counsel because if it's a federal law, and it's actually stated in the law that local boards of education are required to have a policy. The policy's centered around student data when it comes to surveys and when it comes to medical examinations. I think where it's causing some of the confusion is the definition of medical examinations. So, just so everyone's at home, I think the actual wording on it is invasive medical examinations. We don't do that, and I can't be any clearer than that. We have the policy because it's federally required. The Board of Education had to adopt that policy. The policy goes out, and we're mandated at least annually to send that policy out to families. We do so in the student handbook because that's one communication that's consistent every year, that every student gets one every single year. So, that's a mechanism for us to be in compliance with the distribution requirements under that policy. Where I think some of the confusion lies, and I actually agree with this, is the initial portion of the policy is surrounding surveys and information. I think where it's getting lost in translation a bit is the policy actually creates more parental rights for parents to opt their children out of sharing information with the school district. So, the first part of the policy is around surveys, and there's essentially eight different categories that parents have the right to opt out of their child participating in a survey. I'll give you a brief example. For secondary students, we partner with youth services, social services, sometimes with other state organizations. Sometimes it's mandatory. Well, we'll do, I use an example, may do a survey at the high school about vaping, right? We don't want anybody to vape, but sometimes we poll kids about, have you been exposed to vaping? Is it in your life? There are, you know, drugs and alcohol surveys, things like that. Some of you are on committees where you actually see the data through the Youth Mental Health Awareness Committee. That data was shared, it is nuntuck, I think, last year. The crux of it is, that information, as a parent, that's one of those areas in that eight sort of list of things that you can opt out of. That as a parent, you may say, I don't want my kid to vape, but I don't want my kid talking to you about vaping. That is 100% your right. You can opt out. There's a tax to the policy as an opt-out form. This actually creates more opportunities for parents to decide what it is This actually creates more opportunities for parents to decide what it is that they want to share. The confusion is, the second part of the policy talks about invasive medical examinations, which again, I will state, we don't do. But when you look at it, the definition that's required to be included in there, it's a little, first of all, I will agree, I spoke with a parent earlier today, actually communicated with a parent, and I said, I don't understand where the feds came up with surveys and medical examinations and how it ended up in the same thing. But again, we're talking about federal laws, and this would not be the first time that some of us have shaken our head about a decision that was made in DC. So I don't know why they were combined. I'm not a lawyer, and also, I'm not a doctor, so Doc, jump in at any point here. But I, some of the confusion, at least through the communications that I had, was there was this insinuation that school nurses can examine our children in a non-emergency way. And that does not happen. And one of the things I think it's important, because I know a lot of working families and parents are putting their kids to bed now, they watch these meetings probably tomorrow morning, and they're wondering, why did I get this in a, in a student handbook? I don't know why they were combined, so this is just an educated assumption, because the policy and the law, the federal law, and by default, your policy, is rooted in the collection of student data. So that's where the survey piece comes in, like, we collect student data and parents can opt out. The medical examination piece, because it, it states that any information that's non-emergency and invasive medical examination, and it's what they exclude. So what they exclude in that, what's not counted, are hearing tests, vision tests, and scoliosis tests. Well, our school nurses do do that. Anything else, and, and essentially, what they're describing in that description is a physical, to which we don't conduct physicals in the Enfield Public Schools. Our nurses don't conduct it, and anyone who you have parent, anyone who you have children, no, you're required in order, and it's also the wording and the definition, in order to attend school. Well, in order to attend school, you have to have a physical. Our physicals, our policy is that your physical be provided by either the child's pediatrician or a chosen medical professional of, of the family's choosing. Sometimes they go to urgent care to do physicals and things along those lines. So the definition means, or at least on the surface, tends to describe the act of a physical because it says non-emergency. In emergency situations, yes, if our, if a kid has an accident in the playground, our nurse is going to go and make sure, and assess that child to make sure they're okay. And then if they have to call an ambulance, one of two things are going to happen. They're either going to call the ambulance while the secretary or the principal calls the parent, or vice versa. That's the protocol, that's what they're doing. And if you've all met our nurses, that's what they're going to do. But the policy doesn't say emergency, it says non-emergency. It's irrelevant to us because we don't conduct physicals. Why it's in this policy is because it's federal law. This got me in a bit of a rabbit hole, like, okay, why would they include that? You have to remember this is a federal policy. Just because the Enfield Public Schools nursing staff do not conduct physicals of our children, other districts in the state of Connecticut do. Large urban areas, areas, Dr. Jerry and Jean, you've done some research on this, districts that have school-based health centers, sometimes they actually conduct the physicals for students as a, as a community health center. This is a federal policy. There are sometimes, I can imagine throughout the country, small rural areas who don't have a hospital within 100 miles, don't have a doctor's practice within 100 miles, so the school nurses would be required to do the, to do the physicals. We don't do physicals. In order to do a physical here, and I'm going, I may have messed this up, so Jess, I apologize, the districts that we're aware of that do physicals, their nurses are either PAs or NP's. Our nurses are neither. But I can't reiterate enough, we do not do any invasive medical examinations. If your kid is in an, an emergency or an accident or something happens on the playground, you bet our nurse is going to make sure that that child is okay, and if an ambulance needs to be called, they're going to be called, but you're going to be called as well. The purpose of this policy, where it makes sense from a physical perspective, is a physical is also gathering data to see whether or not you're qualified to attend school, and attendance is in there. We're left to assume that's why the federal government put it in there, even though it's irrelevant to us, it, it has to be in your, in your policy. You know, if, if this is something that the Board so desires to relook at the policy, you're not going to be able to change it, you may be able to tweak some of the words if you decide to do that. Again, I look at it, and I was, he and I even looked at it multiple times. I remember back in 2021 when we first got it, even though I'm not the liaison, Andy will share with me, this is what's going in front of committee. This passed by the Board of Education in total in May 2021. So this has been on the books formally in this, in this format since 2021. I understand, at first glance, it looks a bit confusing. As a, as a parent, I would have second, if I didn't do this for a living, I would have said, what, why do we have this? Why are they connected? But looking at the totality and the fact that this is a federal law, I just thought needed some clarification because in the last 24 hours, we've gotten a bunch of, at least, if not direct communications. I've gotten one parent who actually reached out to me, but I've heard other staff members say they've gotten questions. So I just thought it was important to use the time to clarify this and can certainly answer any questions when Board member comments come up. But other than that, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. Audiences? Maureen Griffin, you're only speaker tonight, so it'll be four minutes.
Okay, so I've been thinking about the comments.
In that address.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Maureen Griffin, 98ABR. I've been thinking about what was said during the comments of the last meeting, and I wanted to say something to Jonathan, but he's not here, so please pass this along to him. He's not running again is a loss to the, our schools, kids, and district. Jonathan understands the assignment that one takes on when you're sworn in, to work to provide all of the children in our schools with the best education possible to set them up for success in life. It is not to be a culture warrior. Others mention that learning begins at home and setting goals is a good practice for advancing in life. Can't disagree with either sentiment in a general sense. In the home is where one inculcates your values and expectations for your children, not for others' children. Please, yes, raise your children with a strong example and understanding of how to live out your values. We need a diversity of experience and opinions, for that is a strength. But do not deny others the right to do the same. Our public schools must be an oasis of acceptance and support for all. Goal-setting is foundational to reaching one's dreams, but we must not assume we have insight into what those dreams are for others. One's circumstances and family history may lead to vastly different goals. So if I may be so bold, Mr. Dreszek, here's where I'm going to make yet another suggestion. I believe that the Board and the wider community would be well-served by a presentation on Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs and the Impact on Development in Life of a, in a Family, and obviously the children. I'm sure the Counseling Department could do it well. Not only would it provide a framework for understanding the need and value of the many supports and ancillary, yeah, I can't say this, ancillary services offered to our students and families. Heck, it might even stir some empathy for those facing greater challenges the most. So please, if there's space on any of your guests in the near future, consider it. And thank you for that explanation for the, that policy, because I saw that blow up on Facebook, and I actually emailed one of our, one of the members on the Policy Committee to get clarification myself, because I didn't want to presume to know. So thank you for doing that. Okay, I'm done, bye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine, Board Member Comments. Ms. Kree.
I just want to simply say, thank you, Ms. Griffin, for coming to our meetings and being very supportive. Thanks for giving your time. Welcome back, would like to say that again, also. Now that school is in session, I am looking forward to reporting exciting events happening with my liaison school, which is Prudence Crandall, and just working with the Board, again, as we accomplish great things together this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kree. Dr. Kalman.
Maureen, thank you for suggesting Maslow. I read them twice, toward a psychology of being, first time when I was in high school, and it was one of those foundational books, you know, it kind of influenced everything I did after, after, after that period of time, so thank you for bringing that up. Kite held its first meeting of the school year on September 6th, and just some of the highlights. All 28 of the ECDC slots have been filled. A $3,900, $3,900 quality improvement grant was, will finance a school readiness coaching program for preschool classrooms at Stowe. Melanie Smith Cervera from EastCon will be returning to work with the staff on this project. The homeless are all too often invisible to us, but this is particularly tragic when it involves young children. As a reminder, McKinney-Vento data indicate that there are 25 students known to be homeless, six in grades pre-K to 2. So something that we shouldn't forget. The Sparkler Promotion Initiative will continue this year through a grant awarded this summer. As a reminder, Sparkler is an app that parents can utilize to communicate with childcare professionals about the developmental status of their children. An attempt will be made to introduce this app to at least one pediatric practice in Enfield. My personal view is that pediatricians should have been the ones leading the way with respect to this advanced technology, but better late than never. ECDC is hiring a toddler teacher and will be starting home visits for new families. The Kite Leadership Work Group has developed the following collaborative goals derived from the Enfield Childhood Community Plan. First, expand play opportunities. Second, promote family connections. Third, participate in social media campaigns. Fourth, support technology with respect to translation and interpretation. And finally, engage and support schools, centers for early childhood education, and home providers. A reminder from Kite, Enfield Public Schools Family Engagement Partnership, Family Day will be held on the Town Green on September 17th from 11:30 to 3:00 p.m. As part of its family engagement initiative, Kite has been working with Peg Oliviera from the Gassell Institute to make a presentation to the Enfield Board of Education regarding strategies for enhancing communications with families. Our team of family educators have completed training of all Head Start and STEAM staff, and on September 22nd will start training integrated staff in this, excuse me, our team of family educators have completed training in circle of security of all Head Start and STEAM staff, and on September 22nd will start training integrated staff in this relational approach to child behavior. The Enfield Family Resource Center's Learning Through Play Groups will be enrolling children aged birth to five from September 18th through November 30th. The program will be held at three locations, Stowe Early Learning Center, Henry Barnard School, and Enfield Social Services at Alcorn. This is particularly, it's a particularly important program since we know that children learn primarily through play. Please contact Erin Grimes at 860-253-6580 for the Stowe and the Enfield Social Services locations, and Lisa Carrier, I'm not sure if I'm mispronouncing, Carrier, excuse me. Sorry, Lisa. And Lisa Carrier at 860-253-4769 for the Barnard School location. Finally, October 4th will be the date for the annual Kite meeting to be held at JFK. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Cushman.
Actually, I had a question through the chair to Mr. Dreszek, or even to Mr. Ungary, just regarding the policy that you were speaking about, 6162-51. Would it be possible, just to avoid any kind of confusion, to separate that, make it into two policies, maintaining the same required wording, but just putting perhaps the invasive physical examination portion of that policy into an entirely separate policy? Would that be possible?
Yep, go ahead.
I would recommend, Mr. Rider, maybe we could bring that up in Items from the Table. Ms. Cushman, we've got a policy meeting next week. Why don't we, why don't we get that on the table, on the agenda? And then that'll give me some direction. I can reach out to our attorneys and see what they have to say, because I do agree, maybe there's some, we can't change the, the nature of the policy, but we can certainly maybe soften up the language, or that's an interesting idea, Ms. Cushman. So, Mr. Rider, if you're okay with that, it's your committee, but maybe we could get that on Items from the Table, and then that'll give me some direction. Does that sound fair?
Ms. Chairman, can I just add something? While you're at it, could you just look at the term invasive? That, from a medical standpoint, makes no sense at all. And if it can be stricken or revised, I would strongly advise it.
Yep, maybe, maybe the best, this is just a suggestion, Mr. Rider, maybe if people have thoughts like that, maybe they could get them to Mr. Rider. I don't want to, it's his committee, so I don't want to take his, his show over. So maybe you could get those thoughts to Mr. Rider, and then when we go Items from the Table, get me a list of all those things, and then I can have a conversation with our attorney. Because I, you know, what do I, what's my opinion, but I agree with you, I think some of the language is really pretty rough.
Just, Dr. Kalman, that, that's actually listed in the document from the U.S. Department of Education, so that's why it was, it was made in there.
Right, so that, does that mean it can't be altered?
I don't know. I, I shouldn't have opened my mouth. It's in there, that's why, I just know people, like, we didn't make it up, like, it's literally in this document. So that, that was my point, so I, I will now shut up.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman. Mr. Hamery.
Okay, so I hope you brought some snacks, it's going to be a minute. First off, I want to thank the Enfield Fire District Number One for their annual 9/11 Memorial Ceremony, and to Lori Gates in Enfield who are for the Town Hall flag display outside this chamber. They've always done a fantastic job at reminding us not to forget, and I appreciate everything they do for that. Earlier today, I had the chance to talk to a family member of a town resident in need of a kidney transplant. You might have seen the signs around town for Natalie Needs a Hero, and I would strongly encourage anybody to learn more about Natalie at the website, N A, excuse me, NK R dot org slash RPK459, to learn about the, the needs that Natalie has and potentially find a kidney match, kidney donor to match her needs. Family Day happening this Sunday at the Town Green, looking forward to being on, on the green for a little bit of that, and potentially, not to get my own hopes up, but to potentially bring out some instruments to allow for a musical petting zoo at one of the booths out there, where the attendees will be able to hopefully put fingerprints on instruments and make some loud noises without being scolded or looked at, or being told, as I was once upon a time, that's very expensive, don't touch that. So, looking forward to that. Where I was earlier today, and I was able to talk to the family member of Natalie, I was witnessing firsthand the pickup and drop-off process at Henry Barnard. And I don't know where to begin with what I saw, but it was, and from what I understand, it's been a hot mess. This morning, I saw one car driving around another car into oncoming traffic to get around the stopped traffic, only to stop one car ahead because there was a bus with the stop sign out. So not well, it, it just, it's just very unsettling, and pickup at the end of the day was slightly better, but not by much. So that was a concern, and I don't know how to address that other than to highlight that there's a pretty, pretty strong concern over there. And I assume that there's knowledge about the situation because it is such a long-lasting, longstanding issue. Regarding that Policy 6162-51, I just want to take a moment to highlight the fact that concerns were brought up in the way that they should have been, that they've been addressed the way they should have been, that it's being handled appropriately. And I look forward to the conversation as a member of the Policy Subcommittee to find a way to make resolution of that, because I agree, it's unsettling at first read, and second read, and third read, and that should, something should be done. And I look forward to that conversation as the Subcommittee gets together to review the policies, to make that determination on how to improve upon that. I got an email earlier today from an Enfield High School student, senior, and I'm very excited about this idea. Yes, please. It's exciting because there's so much talent that we have yet to discover from students and staff alike, and who knows how that can develop into perhaps something into the wider community? Perhaps something that could make use of the bandchild behind this building to make that effort and highlight the opportunities to see what kind of art is available through the students of the high school and wherever it goes. Anyway, looking forward to seeing where that develops, whether it becomes a liaison thing or a Enfield Culture and Arts Committee thing. Happy, happy to have that conversation. Going to read this really quick. I wrote it in a, in a hurry. Happy Birthday, Dr. Callen. This is, again, not necessarily, it's, well, yeah. So September is, the National is a September, September is Library Card Sign Up Month. And signups and renewals at the Enfield Libraries will be entered into a raffle for a gift card donated by Wooden Tap. So if you're interested in learning to, taking advantage of whatever the library has to offer, it's a really good time to stop by and get your own library card and all the resources that the library has to offer free of charge, including the Open Mic Night that happens first Wednesday of the month, but we'll talk about that one in the ECAC report. This, this next thing is, is something that, of a book report that I'm going to provide. And I hope, I'm in the process of reading this here book. It's called, "We Are Going to Be Lucky: A World War II Love Story in Letters." And I can't tell if this is on the camera at all, but we're just going to assume that somewhere there's a camera that's capturing that. There we go. All right. Thank you very much. So, in this book, I'm only at page 100. It's a series of letters written between a newlywed couple in the early World War II, 1940s era. And the husband is a new soldier going through his training. The bride is the Rosie Riveter stereotype, where she's working in a factory and doing what she can to support the war efforts. Again, 100 pages into this, and it talks about the segregated army that he's experiencing and what they go through. She's talking about the impact of antisemitism in her efforts at the factory to be as productive as possible. Talking about the efforts to stand up a union in the factory, because at that point, they recognize the value of a union. And so much more that was captured in the first 100 pages in what was handwritten letters sent over the course of the time that they were apart. And with the time delay that we are no longer accustomed to. So, if anybody's interested, hopefully the library's got a copy of it, but this one says "Advanced Reading Copy, Uncorrected Proof." So I don't know if it's something that's readily available. I picked it up at a thrift store on a hunch. But "We Are Going to Be Lucky" is the name of the book, at a time where we are subject to stories from across the country, talking, and across the world, about the, the thought process of being Antifa. This is a couple that is putting in writing what it means to be anti-fascist and to fight fascism. So, there it is in writing, black and white. I would encourage anybody to find a copy and read it, and I will continue, I look forward to refishing the book in the near future. That's it for the time being. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hamery. Mr. Ungar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very, just very quick, I'm liaison to Hazardville Memorial School, and so there's been some changes at the school.
Exciting.
Yeah.
With Ms. Fitz and Ms. Tate, that's all. I'm saying it's exciting.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm talking about the leadership.
Yeah, yeah, exciting, yeah.
So with regard to, former Principal Lisa Hunter has moved on, and want to wish her well in her new endeavors. She was a great principal, but we have a new principal, as Hazardville Memorial, and that's Kristin Fitzsimmons. And congratulations, Kristin, and we know that you're just outstanding, and you're going to be doing a fine job, and we're all happy to see you in your new position. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett.
I'll just follow up on that with Mr. Ungar. They also gained Ms. Tate, and as an Enfield Street School family, I will say they gained a gem, and she is dearly missed. But I want to start by apologizing for missing the last meeting, and start with some reflections on what you, Mr. Dreszek, mentioned in the last meeting about our new staff and respect for the profession of teaching. I'd like to follow up and add to what you shared. Enfield Public Schools is inclusive of everyone it takes to make a school function. Our bus drivers, our paras, our secretaries, our admin, our teachers, our security guards, our school counselors, our social workers, and our partners. We need them all. I can tell you as a mom, this back-to-school transition has been incredibly hard. And it has been because of the grace, the support, and the empathy of our Enfield Public School staff that I am still making it to drop off. Actually, I'm no longer making it to drop off, my husband is. I want to take a moment and acknowledge that staff. We have staff who have, who have and continue to dedicate their career, passion, and skill for over 20 years with us, like Mr. Ramos tonight. Even though they could accept a job in a district just over the bridge for much more money. We have past students who come back to give back and continue to teach in our district. And I'd be remiss if I don't mention the teachers who join us from other districts or experiences. Thank you. All of these perspectives is what will make us better. I also want to applaud the district. I'm noticing our staff starting to reflect our student population more. We have more work to do, but I do notice more, more males in our elementary school buildings, seasoned staff, faces of different shades and cultural expression. This also matters. Fostering a community of belonging, affirmation, and connection is essential to student success. So thank you. There are a few things that I'm hoping to hear more about. So I also heard, Mr. Dreszek, you will be sharing with us some strategic goals. So I'm excited to hear kind of what those look like, and how we can engage our students and staff and families, and what those goals mean, and how we actualize them. A couple of things that I'm hoping to see improve in this school year is our buildings and facilities. I am excited about the work of the Modernization Committee, and I hope our town remains committed to creating our schools as community destinations. We need pride in how our school grounds look. The property is the first thing that greets our students and staff and families, and that needs to be treated with the utmost prioritization. We also have, I mentioned how the starting of the school year has been really challenging. I have two students in two different schools, and I can't say that I am, if I could like expedite the modernization work. And I'm a family that has access to my own transportation. I have flexible work schedules where I can make it to pickup time and get there, but a 306 pickup at Parkman and a 320 pickup at Enfield Street School is really hard. And I think as much as we can think about how this can support ease of family, ease of burdens on families, I think is really important. I do have a question, my hope, I don't know if this goes to joint facilities. There is a traffic, I heard you mention as I was going out to the restroom, a traffic issue at Henry Barnard. I also think of Enfield Street School being on Route 5. There's no school zone or speed sign, like, or like a speed sign like that was outside of JFK, just reminding people that it was a school zone. And this road is busy and fast, and arrival and pickup times getting in and out of that parking lot. I think Mayor Crisati said he used to stand and do like traffic control.
I just want to remind, because Mr. Hamery brought this up too, just to remind the public at home, today was also an election day in the Barnard Zone, so there was additional traffic at that facility. I'm not disagreeing that there are traffic concerns, but one of the things that we do work very closely with is with the Enfield Police Department, particularly the Traffic Division, that they monitor particularly in the first few weeks of school to see how the flow is. And they've never hesitated to send someone over. I've actually called the chief and said, "Come stand outside my office," because people blowing through stop signs on buses right on Route 5. Just blowing, every day at 3 o'clock, Kathy, what do we hear? Horns. People are blowing through. So, yeah, it's a concern. It's a concern that the entire community has to be, but it's not necessarily something that we control with traffic flow in our parking lots, but I think it's in the greater good. But I do want people to understand that the, the police department takes us very seriously, and they're very good partners with us on this. But we could always, it's just geography, too. We can't fix some of the things we have.
Totally. I was just wondering, and I don't know if it's because of Route 5's like historical essence, about putting like a school zone sign out, or like, I don't know. Because I know getting a sign for the high school was a feat. So just a wonder that maybe could be explored by our town folks. And then the last thing I know is a priority of mine, and I think our caucus is really that family partnership. And so my comment would be around kind of the policy you shared. I think it's about how it's communicated to families. So I think that policy just coming home without context, and without understanding what's being shared and why they, do they have to sign, don't they sign? I think how we communicate things to families is really the next kind of look. And I know in the last meeting, Maureen, you shared some potential suggestions about more inclusive kind of student voice. I'm thinking about the role of the Parent Advisory Committee that you started last year, Mr. Dreszek, about how those can be enhanced in our goals and our support. Last thing I will touch on is my kind of school updates. Lord, I just lost my sound, sorry. Enfield Street School tomorrow, we have open house. On the 21st, there's a PTO meeting, and on the 26th is Picture Day. And then Parkman, on the 18th of this month, there's an instrumental rental at JFK for families and students interested in that. There's a 20, on the 26th is the PTO fundraiser at Panera, and the 27th is our rescheduled open house and picnic. And just in closing, thank you so much to the school staff, everybody that's inclusive of everybody who makes a school function on this back-to-school. You have really helped out in so many ways in my own household. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Mr. Rider?
So as a few of us have mentioned, there's a lot of activities, there's a lot of welcome back picnics. The early releases last week did mess up the schedule for some of our elementary schools, because that was their week to do their welcome back picnics, et cetera. So please, as I say every week, for, this is our sixth school year, check enfieldpto.com/whitney/ess. All the schools are there, everything's listed. The PTO parents that volunteer in our schools are amazing, and it always is a handful of people trying to keep 400 families informed. And not everybody's on social media, so having everything on a dot com, and we also share things on the social media as well, but having everything on a dot com, and we always have like a month look back from all the principals' updates. So if you are hearing about something, and somebody's like, "Oh, the principal mentioned that like two weeks ago in their newsletter." Well, I already deleted that email. They're always on enfieldpto.com. We always keep like a four to five letter look back. So some principals do them weekly, every Friday, some do them every other week, some do them once a month. But we always keep the last few up there on our website. So if you missed it and you're anti-social media, you don't have Facebook, whatever it is, enfieldpto.com, you can pull it up on your phone. So I don't have specifics for any of the schools, but I did want to reiterate, enfieldpto.com for all of our schools, because everything that I get, and we do get pretty much all the principals' communications, and if I miss one, sometimes we fall off their email lists. I always reach out and say, "Hey, I haven't gotten an update from your building in a couple of weeks." And, "Oh yeah, we changed our emails, and sorry about that." And I, I'm in constant communication with our staff about that, so please check it out, bookmark the page, et cetera. This is our sixth full school year doing that. And prior to that, I had done separate incarnations for just Hazardville when I was the PTO president there. And then we added a Whitney page, and my daughter moved up to Whitney, and then I was like, "I'm just going to do this for everybody." So that's what we do there, and we're very proud of it. Somebody thanked, oh, Mr. Ramos, our Teacher of the Year, had thanked Ms. Crisati for introducing him even back in his Fermi days about how he could get more involved with Unified Sports and how he met their son, Brian. And Marilyn asked me to share something, and this kind of ties into our School Modernization Committee. So Jim Malley is holding an informal presentation on the history of Enfield Schools. So I wanted to reach out to my School Modernization Committee friends. This might be a good opportunity to kind of learn more about our buildings. This will be held at the Enfield Central Library this Thursday, September 14th, from 6:00 to 7:30. Jim does so much research prior to his presentations, he's very knowledgeable, so he's going to kind of go through the history of Enfield Schools. So anybody that wants to go to the Central Library this Thursday, the 14th, from 6:00 to 7:30, they'll get a lot of information and learn a few things, and we thank Jim for doing that. And the last thing I wanted to mention for this week specifically is that I'll be reaching out to the administration through Kathy and Central Office, but I wanted to let all of our administrators know that this will be also the sixth year that, as a district, will be participating in Enfield Public Schools/Enfield PTO PJ Day for Children's, Connecticut Children's, formerly CCMC, now they go by Connecticut Children's. So that is always the second Friday of December. This year, that'll be Friday, December 8th. So you'll hear more about that as we get closer, but I want to let the administrators know that we already have our donation link up, we have graphics for them to share. So you're going to start seeing that date on all the PTO calendars, all the school calendars, and hopefully the principals and our school PTO families can help us share that with everybody. So again, December 8th, the second Friday in December, will be our sixth annual, as a district, raising money for Connecticut Children's, for kids who live in their PJs while they battle cancer down in Hartford and all their other locations throughout the state. And our goal this year is going to be approximately $7,000, $7,500, even though last year we raised over $10,000 as a district, because if we do reach that number, we will have accumulated over the six years doing this together. And again, some schools did it individually before we did it as a team. But that will, will reach the $45,000 plateau. So obviously, if we surpass that $7,500 and end up with $12,500, we can say that we've reached $50,000 as a school district, and not just as a school district, but as a town, because some local businesses have made donations through the link that we've shared. Smith Bus has participated. I want to get some more businesses involved this year. And Enfield, as a district, as a town, and as a team, has appeared in the top three, four, but always in the top five since we started doing this as a team, and it's something that I'm very proud of. I'm proud to help manage that, and I'm also proud of our students and our families and our staff who participate. And again, all the adults that have a hand in taking care of our kids every day in our buildings. And that's it. You'll hear more about that as we get closer.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. I just have a couple of quick things to mention. We got a flyer from Enfield Loaves and Fishes about what you can do to help them and how it's really a community event. There's a couple of different steps. You can, number one, fulfill community service hours. Number two, create school projects. Number three, learn life and job skills. And number four, help fight food insecurity. For more information, you can visit www'enfieldloavesandfishes.org. They are also on Instagram, and they are on Facebook. Enfield Loaves and Fishes does an amazing job for the town of Enfield, so everybody should look into how we can support Enfield Loaves and Fishes, not only our schools, but our, getting involved with our community. I also wanted to, I, I hope everybody had a nice back-to-school time. I know that there was the struggles. Ms. Pickett and I were talking a lot through the last couple of weeks, because one of my three kids was terrible until second grade. So I felt for her, and she'll never understand this, but I do miss those days. So, but I hope everybody had a nice return, back-to-school, families and staff alike. I know last week was a tough week with the weather, so. The other, the last thing I want to mention is September is National Suicide Prevention Month. And it's just having the groups here tonight, the Best Buddies, and the Unified Sports, and Mr. Ramos, it kind of really tied it in, and it really always makes me think of Rachel's Challenge and how we implemented that in town, and how it really is important to be kind, because you don't know what people are going through. So really, a simple smile, a simple hello can really change a lot for a person. And if you sit through the Rachel's Challenge presentation, it's really interesting on just how small acts of kindness can really go a long way. So it's really important to check on your friends, even if they seem fine. It's really important to check on your family members. Some of the strongest people you know deal with mental health issues daily, and just because you think somebody's okay, just reach out to them if you know that they, they from time to time struggle. That's all I have for this evening. We're going to move on to Item 10, Unfinished Business, which there is nothing on the agenda. We're going to move on to Item 11, New Business, which is to approve the 2023-2024 Student Representatives and Alternates. Mr. Dreszek?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And your packet are the names of the, as I said earlier, Mr. Long and I, and Ms. Clark will be meeting with the representatives tomorrow, but Ms. Clark is recommending the following students to serve as the 23-24 student reps and alternates. Clark is recommending the following students to serve as the 23-24 student reps and alternates. Student reps would be Kayla, we all recall from last year, who she was our grade 11 rep. She will move up to the grade 12 rep. And Isabella Denald, I don't want to mispronounce her name, but she'd be our grade 11 rep. And our student alternates would be Jimmy Padilla, who was our grade 11 alternate last year, but he'll be a grade 12. And Alicia Lizotti, I'm going to mispronounce her name.
Alicia Lizotte.
Okay, I totally butchered that. So I apologize, Alicia. You can give me stuff about it tomorrow.
It's Alicia.
It's Alicia?
Alicia.
Alicia. My wife's going to kill me, because her name, her name gets butchered all the time, and it's not Alicia. So there you go. You get a free day off tomorrow, Alicia. Grade 11 alternate.
Jimmy Padilla's been in here for, before for Buzz, and I think-
Jimmy's been here a lot.
Yeah, he has been here a lot. Okay, do I have a motion to approve Kayla Suprenant for grade 12, and Isabella Denald for grade 11 as our student reps? Well, and to approve our student alternates, Jimmy Padilla, grade 12, and Alicia Lizotte, grade 11. Moved by Mr. Ungeyer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, or at least put it on the record, I don't remember if that was your suggestion recently, but somebody did make a suggestion that we, you know, rotate these reps. I know there's often conflicts, so I just wanted to know if we could make a conscious effort, either working with Ms. Clark at the high school or through the superintendent's office, if one of the two can't be here, that we reach out to the others. So all four of them get a chance to participate throughout the school year, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Mr. Hamery?
Yeah, pretty much the same thing. I remember the conversation that we, that Maureen brought in about that. And I definitely think it's worth exploring, because while we've been very fortunate with our last two student reps that were faithfully here every, for every meeting, it's good to be able to see the alternates on occasion, and to get that diversity among the students that want to be involved in the process. So if there's a way that we can look into that, great, and thank you.
Ms. Pickett?
I would just add, maybe not for the next policy committee, but maybe one after that, looking at our policy 916O to think about, is there maybe some more like inclusive language around how we select student reps and who they, I haven't read the policy in depth, so I'm going to own my own misinformation here.
I have it here.
Beautiful. But I wonder if like there is an opportunity to think about how we do that selection process, their role, and the role of the alternates, because I do think it's a nice thing to know, like if somebody's going to be out, to make sure that there's student voice here.
And just, and just one quick, one more quick comment. You know, thank you to these students that are still interested and still want to do this. It's, you know, they may not know what they're getting into, but for the ones that do, it's great to have them back and interested.
Since we're talking about student reps, I kind of wonder if Morgan's watching right now.
I bet she is.
While she's away in college. Roll call. So no further discussion? Roll call, Kathy?
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamery?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Item B, Discussion and Action Regarding the Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Mission Statement. Mr. Dreszek, I'll just segue, just so people have an understanding. Dr. Jerry and Ms. Akri, they have been working since they've gotten elected on the mental health and wellness mission of Enfield Public Schools, and they have done a lot of work. And they, we had a leadership meeting for them last week so they could come and talk to us, because they had felt, felt they were hitting a lot of roadblocks. So they have come up with a mission statement, and we're going to discuss the mission statement, and then however you want to work it, if you want to discuss your, your next steps here or at the, on the subcommittee reports, it's up to you. So go ahead, Dr. Callen and Ms. Akri, please feel free to, to step in or add.
Okay. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, in the process of trying to figure out where we could obtain funding, Jean approached Senator Kissel, and they had a discussion. And Senator Kissel mentioned, if you really want to be effective in tapping into resources, you should have some sort of a mission statement. And so that's what we attempted to do. And actually, this is, technically, this isn't a mission statement, it's more of a statement of intent, because it's much too wordy to be really considered a mission statement, right, John? So I, we circulated the, this statement, Jean to her caucus, and I circulated amongst all of us. I'm not sure if you want me to go ahead and read the whole, the document again. It's not real long, but I could go ahead and do that.
Please.
Okay, so, "The mission statement of the Enfield Board of Education Mental Health Committee. The Board of Education recognizes that the incidence of mental health challenges confronting our youth is extraordinarily high. As substantiated by a survey conducted by B. Wetland Smith Consulting, May 3, 2022, such challenges include suicidal ideation and attempts, self-harm, anxiety, depression, and substance abuse. These problems predate the COVID epidemic, but have been greatly exacerbated by it. The study also notes a correlation between the prevalence of mental health problems and socioeconomic status. Enfield has been designated a community with a high social vulnerability index, a measure of socioeconomic challenges. This suggests a need to address social determinants of health as an important component of our mental health plan. The mental health of our youth should be addressed by all sectors of the Enfield community, including especially the school system, where a majority of our children spend so much of their time. For many children, and for a variety of reasons, access to mental health services is quite limited, making the school system an ideal place to provide such services. So the Mental Health Committee will, and these are the bullets that we thought were most salient, consider the use of screening to identify children at risk of mental health problems. Identify opportunities for expansion of mental health services within the school system. Enhance mental health programs and initiatives already present in the school system. Explore opportunities for expansion of social services to address adverse social determinants of health, key contributors to mental health problems. Collaborate with community resources to address the mental health needs of our students. And finally, to investigate expansion of the school-based health center to increase access to care." I think that last one has been pretty much put on hold for, for a while, because for logistic reasons, that's going to prove to be a challenge. Although I have to admit, I don't want to strike that, Mr. Dreszek, as an ultimate goal, I think. And maybe that's something that the school modernization program should keep in the back of their minds. We, I spoke with Tim Neville some time ago, and he was kind of disappointed, because when Enfield High was being constructed, it was his impression that there was going to be some sort of school-based, school-based health center. And that idea somehow or the other got lost, and he didn't quite know why. And I just want to make sure that at least when we go through the school modernization program, we leave that door, that possibility open, so that should the opportunity arise, maybe we'll have a space available to, to place a, a school-based health center. So that is basically our proposal in a nutshell. I want to stress that this is not related to the proposal that we discussed at our leadership committee meeting. In other words, even if the board should decide to strike all of this, the, the, the proposal to bring the concept of a mental health committee to the policy committee should proceed apace, regardless of what we do with this, because they're two separate issues. And that's all I, I have to say.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Mission Statement?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hamery. Second by Ms. Akri. Is there any discussion or questions? Mr. Ungeyer?
Yeah, I have some, just some comments. Excuse me, I have some comments, because I had the opportunity to read that since then. And so, so I'd rather not accept the mission statement as written. I think a mission statement should be more succinct and describe exactly what the mission, what, what the mission is. And I think, I think some additional work needs to be done on the proposed mission statement that's, that's there now. Now, I applaud both Dr. Callen and Ms. Akri for recognizing the importance of mental health in our Enfield Public Schools, very, very important. I think, I think additional work needs to be done in the, in the area. Now, I think, again, there's two things going on here. One is a establishing a Board of Ed Committee for Mental Health, that's one. And then number two, the framework of that committee, right? And so I'm understanding that, yeah, we can vote here tonight on, and correct me if I'm wrong, okay? We can vote here tonight on establishing the committee. What I'm saying about this document, I think that this document needs additional work. In, in, in a good portion of that, you're using words like enhancing systems and expanding existing resources, enhancing resources, things like that. And I, and I think that's kind of getting ahead of ourselves here a little bit, because it, in essence, predetermines that whatever resources are presently in place are ineffective. That's why you need to enhance them. That's why you need to expand them. So I think first, we need to document what the resources are. What are all the resources that we have? And then try to determine their effectiveness presently. And where are they, where, if, if, if they're, if they're doing a good job or they're not doing a good job. And if they're not doing a good job, then can they be fixed with the level of resources that presently exist? Or if they can't be fixed with the resources that we have in place, then we look, then we start to look at enhancing the resources that we have, or expanding the resources that we have. So, so I think, again, applaud your effort to do this, it's very important, but I think that we need to do a little more work in the development of the mission statement and the function of, of the, of the, of the committee.
Ms. Akri?
That's why it's going to go to policy first. We decided at the leadership meeting that this is going to go to policy, so it can define the responsibilities and the roles pertaining to this committee. So then we can take it from there, after policy has, you know, defined everything for us, what to do, I think, then we'll be able to come up with a better mission statement.
Okay. Mr. Ungeyer?
But did you, did you put up what he read for us to vote on?
Yes, because it's a, it's the mission statement.
We're discussing that first.
Right, I understand.
Right, but I'm just explaining, I'm just explaining one.
But it's on the floor for us to vote for, vote on it.
Great, but we can discuss it first. Ms. Akri, that's how I understood it, that this was a mission statement to kind of say, look, we recognize that there's mental health enhancements, improvements that we'd like, and the Board of Ed is recognizing it. The next steps would be going about to form the committee, which is going to go through policy committee, because this is a different type of subcommittee than we typically have. Does anybody else want to add anything? Ms. Pickett?
Sure, thanks. So Dr. Callen and I have had conversations about that. I thank both you, Dr. Callen and Jean, for your efforts around this. I totally agree that we need to be supporting our district and recognizing what are we already doing, what are the needs of our students, and what can we do to better support them, because the data is clear that we need to be doing something more. And so, thank you for this work. I'm not exactly sure that the statement that was read needs to be formally adopted. I think kind of going through the committee and then coming up with a purpose statement of what the committee is charged with, and what they're going to be focusing on, it makes a lot of sense. I will share that it's not surprising that there might be some, some concerns, you know, coming down, down the pike because of how, what this is being addressed. However, I think if we construct this in a way that is centered around wellness, and how important that is in order to be able to access learning, we need to be well. And so I totally support the work of this potential committee. I'm not sure that we need to adopt that written statement as a board at this point.
Mr. Rider?
Yeah, I was just going to say, to Mr. Ungeyer's point, it seems like even when you read that to us, you were saying maybe this last sentence maybe doesn't need to be in there, or that one isn't possible, or isn't possible at this time in our current lens. So if the, if the question is adopting that as a statement, but even while you read it, you were kind of editing it as you went, that would be my confusion. I, so if the motion is to accept the mission statement, I don't want to go on record voting against that, because it's, it's needed. But I would, I would say if we could amend the, the motion to proceed to-
Table?
Yeah, table it, and then amend the motion to allow you, both of you, to proceed with your fact finding and to see what we can do together as a group. And because I think that we need to take ownership as a Board of Ed. I know that there's other committees like this in town, and you've run into some roadblocks. So I think we need to take ownership and, and give you the permission to move forward, but maybe not with those words in that order.
Can I second that amended motion, or do we need to close the first one? So should we just vote on that, and then?
Yeah, but Mr. Hamery had something to add, and then we will go ahead and, okay.
Harvard's rules is the worst thing ever made.
You're not under a motion.
Okay.
No, I did, I did the first and the second.
Right, there's a first and a second on the floor.
Said, and then we are in discussion.
Right.
Right, so, so we would have to amend the, the motion as it stands separately. If, okay. All right, so I just want to ask for chronological clarification, and anybody, we can like game show this, if you hear something incorrect, hit the buzzer. But historically speaking, that we've had mental health, lack of services, to be blunt, and a increasing need for those services. And then we were looking for ways to pair with existing services in town, or in the region even, to ensure that we can try to put something in place to the betterment of our students through many months of effort to make that possible. So far, so good, right? And those were fruitless. So we have a initiative that this board, and through Dr. Callen and Ms. Akri, have come up with this to make this effort to put something in place of our own accord, because we have a substantial need for our students to address mental health issues that have gone untreated so far. So far, so good, still on, okay. I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly, because the wording is exactly that. It's wording, and it's, it's subject to editing, as Dr. Callen had mentioned as he read it. And at the, for the simple sake of finally getting something moving forward towards the purposes of getting mental health resources, which are at a very bare minimum across the state and beyond. There's a shortage of therapists and social workers and clinicians to, to be looking for at all. But we are running way behind in that process for the betterment of our students, so that we have this moving forward? Yes, please, let's do this. You have my absolute support, so that we can at least get moving. So, thank you.
Dr. Callen?
Yeah, and it's important to recognize the history of this. I had asked you, I think, a few weeks ago, maybe after the last board meeting, if we could put this on the agenda. Now, that came up before I was invited to speak to the leadership team. So these are two entirely, well, they're related, but they're separate issues. And I completely agree with you, John. We should, first, we should get this committee up and running, and then we can address this. But at least this gives us kind of a starting point to work with, and we can amend it as needed. I particularly agree with your argument that we really don't have a thorough understanding of what services currently exist. Maybe that's my fault for not researching that a little bit better, but it seems to me, we just don't have a handle on it. And so that should be a priority. And so I would certainly agree with the, the amended, the suggestion to table.
And I'll just add too, it was kind of putting the cart be, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kuschman, would you like to?
No, I can go after you.
Okay. I was just going to say, it was kind of like putting the cart before the horse, because we didn't really have the horse yet, but now we do.
Right.
Right? So, and I don't think that you should feel that you should have done more work, because I think that when we talked, spoke in leadership, we talked about, you know, your next- think that when we spoke in leadership, we talked about, you know, your next steps, like how would you segment it, like maybe start like K through 2, 3 through 5, and move up that way. So I think now we have a starting point in a direction. So I'm glad it did come up on the agenda so that all of us who are at this meeting could have an active discussion about it, even if the motion's going to get tabled or we have to fail it and then table it. It's at least worthy of a discussion of all of the board members. So I appreciate that. Ms. Cushman?
I was thankful, Dr. Callen, that you mentioned about it not being clear about what services are currently being offered. Because I had noticed in a lot of our school newsletters, there's a very colorful page that has the heading, "Community Health Center, Inc., is at Your School." And if you follow the QR code, it does, when, you know, if you follow the link to locations, it does list all of our schools. And then on this page that's in these newsletters, it says, "Services Your School May Include." And under Behavioral Health is all that's listed, and it says, "Crisis Intervention, Individual Counseling, Group Counseling, Family Counseling, Referrals." So I was just curious about whether that's something that is really available at our school. And when you had said you weren't even sure about what was being offered, I just wondered if this is, because from their site, it's hard to tell what services are being offered at each of the schools that are listed.
I think Chris might be in a better position to answer that question.
I actually, Dr. Callen, I actually sent you to your email a picture of the page that I'm referring to at the early part of the meeting, just because as I...
All right. All right. I'll have to look at it.
Mr. Dreszek, I was going to say, so that was part of the reason we had Dr. Jerry and Ms. Akri come to the leadership meeting so they could really talk about the resources that we currently have and where we could possibly go. So, Mr. Dreszek, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can just add, we do have CHC as a resource in all of our buildings. They have a space that they can provide. But I think, as we discussed in that meeting, the student who participates with CHC has to be a CHC client, if you will. So there is still some boundaries as to what our involvement. An additional conversation could be what we currently provide our students and their families to what we're able to. And I think it's important, and we talked about this briefly, not something that should come as a surprise to you, because we've discussed it throughout this past school year, particularly during the budget, and we had a 22% increase in special ed referrals. And a lot of those increases are not what traditionally 504s become IEPs. 504s that we've traditionally seen over the years would be something of more of a medical diagnosis, where I always give the bad example, he laughs at me. You know, when I was a kid, I had one because I broke my, hurt my knee, and I needed an elevator key, and I was allowed to be late for class because that was an accommodation. The amount of 504 referrals we see now, it's all mental health. It's anxiety, it's depression. Those are going to become IEPs. So 22% increase in special ed, that's 170 kids. It's 170 kids that we're going to have mandated services that we're going to be required to provide for students. So it is a relevant conversation. I don't know if, we do partner with CHC as best we can and make referrals, but it's something that's constantly on our minds on how we're going to maintain. I had this conversation yesterday with, I'll remain nameless, but an elected official who represents the town of Enfield at the federal level, just to put in his ear that other districts got mental health money. If you recall this previous Board of Education, and then continue with you guys, you supported us using the first batch of Esser money, if you remember that. The first thing we bought, when we told everybody, everybody had a wish list of what they wanted to spend this money on, and I got in a little bit of trouble with some of you, Ms. Pickett, about, "Let's not spend it all right now because it's going to run out." Well, it's running out. But the one thing that I did advocate that we spend was we hired 10 social workers. 10 social workers have been with us three years now. You know, our job now is to make sure how we can maintain those 10 social workers as other districts are getting that grant. And we were excluded for the sole reason that we had a better infrastructure than those other districts, because we used the money initially when it first came out to pay for social workers. I got issues with the whole thing, but that's a conversation for another day. But this is why it's relevant, because as board members, you're going to make decisions. You may not make personal decisions or medical decisions or behavioral health decisions for our kids in your capacity, but you make the most important decision. What are we going to fund? And what's a priority of it? So I hope, Ms. Cushman, that answers your questions or your concerns. And there's certainly, there is a lot of, you might be surprised if we don't talk about it, because no one's really asked about the amount of services that we provide for kids. We had that presentation on SEL, Social Emotional Learning, that we really clarified at the beginning of last school year. We're going to touch upon that as we start getting into the other parts of the school year. But I think it's all relative work that the board needs to be aware of, because ultimately, you are the policymakers on what our priorities are going to be.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for all your questions. Thank you for the discussion. So Kathy, do we have to take roll call and say no, or can we amend it to table it?
You can vote on it if you want. You could just say we're going to table this.
Okay. Do we have to vote on the table this, or?
Yeah, usually.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pickett, second by Mr. Ungeyer. We don't need a discussion, I don't think, on that. So roll call, please.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes, to tabling.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I think we lost Mrs. Callen.
She's back. Mrs. Cushman?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hamery?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you. And again, Dr. Callen and Ms. Akri, I really appreciate all your hard work on this, and I know it hasn't been easy, but I hope it gets a little bit easier going forward, so. Item 12, Board Committee Reports, Curriculum Committee, Ms. Pickett?
We will be meeting on the 21st, and our agenda item is to look at the book approval process.
Perfect. Finance Committee, Dr. Callen?
No report.
Policy Committee?
Our next meeting is next week, as we mentioned earlier, tonight on September 19th.
Okay. Leadership Committee, we met last Thursday with our surprise guest, not our surprise guest, our honored guests, Dr. Callen and Ms. Akri, to talk about the Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Group. Mr. Ryder, the Pre-K through 5 School Modernization Committee?
So the School Modernization Committee met last week on September 7th. We were able to hear a presentation from, the recommendation from the company that we had hired to do some work for us. We presented the plan to the School Modernization Committee. We had 13 of 16 members present. All 13 have supported the plan, and we are looking forward to having that plan that was presented on September 7th to the School Modernization Committee presented to the public here at a Board of Education meeting in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Joint Facilities Committee?
Our next meeting is September 28th, 6:30.
The JFK Building Committee?
I don't have a next date, sorry. It's in front of me.
Joint Security Committee?
No meeting scheduled, but I will follow up.
Okay. And the Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Work Group?
I have a report, but it's basically everything that we already covered.
Right.
So I think I'll...
See above.
See above.
Can I ask a question there? My wonder is, so that was a liaison to like a different work group. Are we going to continue to like liaison to that group? And so my wonder is, maybe we need to make some adjustments.
Just to give you a quick background, we had spoken about, there were some suicides in town at a particular time, and at the time, it was Mayor Copan and Chairman Neville. And they got together and said, "What can we do to help the youths in Enfield?" So they formed a mental health committee, and there was a resolution. It was very defined. There was a pediatrician, there was police, EPD representation. We worked really well with social services at the time. And for whatever reason, it's not really going in that direction anymore. And so, there's a feeling that the Enfield Public School piece of it has kind of gotten lost in the shuffle. So Dr. Jerry and Ms. Akri are going to work together through the policy committee to come up with our own work group. That is a Board of Ed committee. And I'm excited to hear their work going forward. Like I said, they have a lot in front of them, and they're trying to figure out the best way they want to prioritize it. If you ever feel like you need to talk to leadership again, that would be great, too, if you want to have more of a discussion. So that's actually going to become a specific board committee report and not a liaison. Yep. Okay. And Enfield Cultural Arts, Mr. Hamery?
Thank you. I want to, I think I've said this at the last meeting, but I want to just once again commend the ECAC on the concert series that was happening at the band shell behind us here. It was a great success and demonstrated that when we have an opportunity to come together for art, it's nothing but a positive thing for the town. I look forward to the ECAC doing more and getting a wider variety in different genres of music. Not going to lie, it'd be great to have some jazz back there, something like that. And I look forward to what may be coming from that. As I said earlier in my comments, the ECAC Open Mic at the main Enfield Public Library on Middle Road, first Wednesday of every month, that is getting traction among the local artists, musicians, poets, both of all generations, of all ages. And I'm not going to hide behind anything, I brought out my guitar the last time. I did two songs. Never before have I ever, but this time I did. It was a fun time, and nobody cried afterwards except me. The ECAC is going to be taking part in the Family Day Sidewalk Chalk Art Contest, as they do every year. It's a contest for all ages, and they have a pretty good turnout and some really great demonstrations of what can be done with chalk on a sidewalk. And again, they give out gift cards for that, so good times for that. ECAC's got a community calendar online, and all are welcome to submit events to the ECAC. So if you're on the social medias, Facebook and others, they have pages that will link you to the process of getting to that calendar. And it's also available through the town website. Just look for the Enfield Culture and Arts Commission online on the Enfield Town website. One of the big things coming up is a Community Paint Day sponsored by the ECAC as a platinum sponsor for a mural to be put in at the Enfield Produce and Deli. And with the Enfield's, the ECAC $500 mini-grants, it's going to be matched by sustainable CT and make that possible. So Community Paint Day is going to be coming up, and they are encouraging as many people that want to get involved and sling some paint to show up and take part in that. Two organizations that have been happening over the last year or so that have been growing over the last year or so, the Parents and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, formerly known as that, PFLAG is what they go by now. They have two support meetings each month, one of them in person at the, as Nuntuck, first Monday of the month, and on the third Saturday of the month, it's virtual. And you can find information for those support groups for the families and friends online at their social media as well. The other one is Enfield Pride, and congratulations to Enfield Pride, who was, the organization itself didn't exist a little over a year ago, and in their social media presence, they have a following of 1,500 right now, which if you've ever established a social media presence and tried to grow it organically or through sponsorships, it takes a while. And this is a group that's grown pretty quickly in the short timeframe, relatively speaking, and it's testament to the fact that there is a community out there that wants that support network to be available to them. And lastly, for the ECAC, looking forward to the Opera House Players production that they're in rehearsals for right now, coming up in November for the Jesus Christ Superstar. And if you've not familiar with that show, please get familiar with it. If you are not familiar, show up. It's going to be great either way. And Opera House Players always does great things. So I look forward to what they do in November, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hamery. Item 13, Approval of Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Special Board of Ed Meeting Minutes from August 22nd to 2023? As a reminder, this became a special meeting because we had to move our time to 5:00 PM. Moved by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Hamery. Any discussion? Show of hands?
I abstained. I wasn't there.
Ms. Cushman has her hand up, yep. Item 14, Approval of Accounts and Payroll. Item 15, there is no correspondence and communications. Item 16, Mr. Dreszek, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr.?
Relax.
No.
Move second. Move second.
Moved by Mr. Hamery, second by Ms. Pickett. Show of hands, please. Everyone, thank you, and have a wonderful evening.